Kim, I'll be right back. I can hear what's going on, but I won't be on screen.
Okay, no problem, Steve. Just need Laura and George. It looks like we have everything, everybody, I should say. And it is six o'clock, so I'm gonna call the water. And I'm gonna start with the right to know script. So tonight we'll be conducting a school board meeting, a South Heagan school board. So before we get started, I'll read through a checklist to ensure that the meeting that we are holding is in compliance for the right to know law. As chairperson of the South Heagan School Board, I find that due to the state emergency declared by the governor as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic. And in accordance with the governor's emergency order number 12, pursuant to executive order 2020-04, and its extensions, this public body is authorized to meet electronically. Please note that there is no physical location to observe and listen contemporaneously to this meeting, which was authorized pursuant to a governor's emergency order. In accordance with the emergency order, I'm confirming that we're providing public access to the meeting by telephone, with additional access possible by video and other electronic means. We are utilizing Zoom for this live phone meeting. All members of the committee and staff have the ability to communicate contemporaneously in this meeting through this platform. And the public has access to contemporaneously watch and or listen to the meeting on Zoom and via phone by following the directions and links provided on our website, www.su39.org. We have provided public notice of the necessary information for accessing the meeting. We are providing a mechanism for the public to alert the public body during the meeting if there are problems with access. If anyone has a problem, please email awallace@su39.org, that's A W A L L A C E at su39.org. In the event the public is unable to access the meeting, will be adjourned and rescheduled. Please note that all votes taken during this meeting shall be done by roll call vote. So finally, let's start the meeting by taking a roll call attendance. When each member states their presence, please also state where they are. And if anyone else is in the room with you during this meeting, which is required under the right to know law. So we'll start with Steve.
Home Alone.
Home Alone.
John.
Glover's home and alone.
Stephanie.
I'm home and alone.
Laura. I didn't quite hear you, but I think I know what you said.
Home and alone.
Oh, thank you. And George?
I am at work in my office and I'm alone.
Okay, great. Thank you. So the first thing we'll do is we'll go to public input. One of two, and for the folks in the public that would like to address the board, please use the raise your hand feature and we'll recognize you. And at that time, when you are recognized, please state your name and your just town you live in. And then go ahead with your comments. From the public.
There is one, Ms. Elizabeth Bryson, Mr. Chairman.
Oh, there, thank you. Okay. Okay, Elizabeth, please feel free to join us.
Hi, my name is Elizabeth Bryson. I'm a sophomore at South Heagan High School and I live on Governor Wentworth Road. I'd like to address the start and end time for the school this year, or for this coming year. I'm very opposed to changing the time, not only because of the start time, but because of the end time. 3:45 is very late for students to come home and be able to do things such as work, be with their families, spend time with with their friends. And it's also not it's not good for the mental health of students because in the, because of the time that students get out of school, it will be dark out by that point. And students who daylight is very good for mental health. And if students are not in having as much daylight as they normally would, that will cause more higher rates of depression and suicide in teenagers. And I know that many of my peers and classmates are very opposed to this as well. And I think that this would be very harmful to students.
All right. Well, thank you very much, Elizabeth. Is there anybody else from the public that would like to speak at this point? One last opportunity for public input, number one, and we will have another public input towards the end of the meeting. If anybody is still here at that point and would like to ask a question or make comments, I should say. Okay. Seeing none, I'll close this portion of public input. I would, I do see Ms. Fox has joined us, so let's get a community council update. Delaney, go ahead.
Thank you. So currently at council, we have two proposals in the queue. And today Mike brought forth the scheduled proposal, and that is taking priority over our second proposal just because of the time restraint that we have. So he brought and presented the proposal to council today, and we only made it through clarifying questions. But in the next two meetings, we should be able to discuss the proposal and hopefully vote on it in time for the board meeting on the 15th. We are also discussing another proposal, which if it were to be passed, it would remove the current South Heagan policies. The policy numbers are GB, GAV, and JLCD, which don't allow for distributions of condoms and other birth control devices. This proposal is strictly to remove the policy. That way anyone in the future has the ability to create a proposal that would then have these items distributed throughout the school. But as of right now, it's just the removal of the actual policy. And I believe Amy spoke to Steve and Laura about having it just be brought to the school board if it were to be passed by council because it doesn't pertain to the other boards, so it wouldn't need to go to the policy committee. And then in February, I also plan to have more details regarding the opinions of the students and like the discussion points made at council for the scheduled proposal. And I also plan on having that written up and add it into your agenda packet. That way you guys have it in writing as well to help with that. But that's it for me today.
Awesome. Thank you. Does anybody have any questions for Delaney before we let her go? No, okay, seeing none. Great. Well, thank you very much, Delaney. You're welcome to listen and watch as long as you like. All right, let's get into any committee updates. Oh, sorry, I saw John had his hand up.
Yeah, thanks. Sorry, I was a little late on that.
No problem.
You said there were two proposals. Maybe I missed, I got the second one about the removal of a couple of certain policies. What was the first?
The first one is the proposed schedule that Mike and his team have been working with for the schedule that would start next year. That would allow like a schedule change for next year.
Okay, thanks.
Anybody else? No? All right. Again, thanks, Delaney. Committee updates. Does anybody have a committee, AKAs, people who are some big delegation recently might want to say something? I don't know. We'll see. Anyone?
Go ahead, Laura.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Laura.
I voted, as the board had discussed, for the proposals at the NH SBA meeting. And Amy Facy was voted for as a vice president for next year. We're proud of her. And yeah, they had one declaration that was new. They hadn't talked about was before, and that was just writing a letter to the governor to promote teachers being higher in a priority for vaccinations if they wanted them. And I supported that.
Okay, great. Out of curiosity, of the ones that we decided to support and also not support, how did those turn out?
I believe they were pretty much in line with how we voted. I'd have to look at my notes, but I'm pretty confident there was no, there were no surprises.
Okay, great, great. Anybody else have any questions for Laura on the delegation assembly? Does anybody else have any other committee updates they'd like to provide?
Just want to make sure everyone's up to speed on JFAK from the SAU. So it just Amherst is not putting the bond on as a warrant out there this year. However, there's, they're voting tonight, I believe, to reaffirm their commitment to put this forth next year. And assuming that that passes, Shannon Gascoigne and myself are going to be attending the February Amherst Board Meeting to work on a PR plan for the coming year. So that's it for now.
Thank you. Anybody else have any committee updates? No? All righty. Well, thanks, everybody for that. Let's move on to the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to accept the consent agenda or pull anything from that?
There were a couple corrections to the minutes.
Okay, hold on. So if you want to do that, Laura, first you have to hold the minutes. I'm assuming you're talking about number one of the consent agenda, or is it number two, or whichever, please let us know which you're trying to correct.
Let me find my notes. I'm sorry. December 17th.
Okay, so you'd like to pull the December 17th draft minutes. Anybody else want anything else pulled at this point? Okay, can we, well, we can do it if it's just a bunch of corrections or clarifications?
I believe it's just clarifications.
Okay, if there's multiple of them, would it be easier to send those to Danae for the record, or is something you want to go over quick?
I can say it quickly. In line 190, it was, you wrote $250 instead of $250,000. In line 356, it's the motion to adjourn did not pass, and it was written as it did pass. That's really it.
Okay. Great. You're welcome. So in that case, would somebody like to make a motion to accept the consent agenda with modifications, whatever the right wording is.
With the minutes as amended, I would make that motion.
Thank you, Amy. Okay, let's do a roll call. So we'll start with Steve.
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
John? I didn't hear John.
Glover, yes.
Okay, thank you. Stephanie?
Ryan, yes.
Laura?
Taylor, yes.
George? Or Jeff? And Gronster, yes. All right, so that is passes 7-0. Great. I'm moving right along. So now we're at the point, I think, so, and we will have the discussion after this topic about our annual meeting postponement. But I think what it does do is it gives us, affords us the opportunity to delve a little deeper into what Mike's, Mike Berry's, I should say, principal of Mike Berry's measures of an outcomes discussion. So I am going to, I think, I'll give it over to Mike. Do you want to go through? So I have, first of all, let me apologize for the lateness. I meant to send it out earlier today. Hopefully, everybody now has the slides that Mike put together for the outputs and outcomes. It is the same material as what was in the minutes, sorry, not the minutes, the principal's report from last week. Or two weeks ago, whenever that was. And so I would turn it forward to Mike, let you go through that, and then we can have some answers, questions, discussion afterwards if that works for everybody. Okay, go ahead, Mike.
Yeah. Do I have the ability? Thanks, Pam. Do I have the ability to share my screen? I'm sure everyone has this they can look at, but I'll share my screen as well. And so, so you know, after the joint board meeting, you know, Pam and Adam, you know, reached out and asked if I would put something together to present here this evening. And really, what I did is I took, I took the outputs and outcomes that were submitted as part of the board report last time. And I gathered them into a presentation and talked them through a little bit more with Christine Landworld for, for another time. And what I wanted to do was just kind of walk them through with you. And, and you know, after the the board meeting in November, what I want, I wanted to do was take the advice of the school board and suggestion and kind of align the the outputs and the outcomes or the initiatives to, to what we're doing and put them in a more clear format that kind of connects South Heagan to, to the district. I kind of just took the liberties to do that. And similar to the liberties that I took in the summer to do that, based on the information when we first did that. And, and my hope is that, you know, we're headed in the right direction with this. And it is a bit of a journey, but I did want to kind of, you know, put down on paper some metrics that we can use at South Heagan to illustrate, you know, the growth of the school and where we're going. And I tried to keep it as versatile as possible. And so, you know, what you see is, is some of the, the initiatives and objectives is they're very broad and flexible because there's a bunch of stakeholders in this. And as the principal, and I think I'm kind of the liaison between, you know, students, teachers, school, community members, families, school board, central office. And so, you know, my experience says, you know, try to keep things open and broad, but, you know, you know, give it some teeth at times. So you can kind of hang your hat on and illustrate the hard work of the students and the families and the staff in a manner that makes sense to the community. So that's why you kind of see what you see here. For me, you know, as, as the educational leader, the instructional leader at South Heagan, you know, I think you could have your, you know, curriculum practices, you can have your instructional practices, and you can have your assessment practices. But, you know, what I think in 2021 and moving forward, you know, it is a constant challenge to engage students. So I will come back to pretty often, you know, the key to do that is engage kids, make the learning relevant and try to use this content in the acquisition of skills in a manner they have to apply it. And so that whenever you hear inquiry-based learning, for me, that's really what it means, is to try to apply the learning and make it relevant and make it eligible, you know, something that is engaging to the kids. And so that's kind of what you see here. And I think one of the major responsibilities of the principal is to develop a master schedule and organize the staff and the faculty so you can do that. You know, you want to make the educational experience as good as it can. And so kind of came up with some, so outputs and outcomes that kind of support this, that align with the district. And I put some, some deadlines that, you know, the, you know, at the end of the day, I serve at the pleasure of the superintendent and the pleasure of the school board. And so, you know, I think with some of these, these can be wordsmith and, and tweak the way people, you know, you know, think need it. And so I think they're fluid and flexible enough to do that. But, you know, as you can see, this, you know, basically trying to make classes, units, and lessons relevant to the kids so they're, so they're as engaged and not bored. And teachers want to do this work. And I can tell you this, that, you know, foundational, my instructional leadership is you want to create an environment where teachers want to do the work. And they want to do this work. And so that's why the first one is there. And that's my experience at South Heagan. That's my, you know, through my conversations with the teachers. And so that's why we put it there. And then, you know, for me is, all right, we do this work, then what's the outcome? Well, if we get kids more involved in school, we get kids more interested in what they're doing. A byproduct of that is we're going to score well on assessments. That's just, that's just the, the nature of it. And there's other things you have to do to do that. But the crux of it is getting teachers to work on their lessons and work on their units. And then we can throw the supports in and the SAT preps in and the utilization of innovation interventions and our flex periods to do that. But that's kind of why you, you see that. And Pam, there are little tweaks based on my conversation with Christine Landworld and her perspective of being in SAU 39 and Amherst far longer than me. So, you know, I added OECD and PISA results as potential. But the top five, you know, we compare ourselves with certain districts here. And, and so that's why that was included in there. So that was the first one. All right. The second one is, you know, it was mentioned that, you know, the electronic, the portfolio is new. And, and I think this is an area that it's not new. It's something that they do as part of the educational process at South Heagan. And I just thought we could make this a little bit more of a intentional process using student services, the counseling office, advisory, and, you know, potentially some, some components of the, of the new schedule that allows us to have school-wide meetings to talk a little bit about how we're going to have the kids kind of archive their time and personalize their time and see how things interconnect from ninth grade through 12th grade, from their classes, from their ELOs, from their out-of-school experiences, from their activities, you know, possibly through advisory. And it's something that already is done here. I just thought we could incorporate, you know, various parts of the school and kind of streamline that process. And then, you know, the, the end of the day, you want kids to graduate doing what they want to do. And you, you know, you're partnering with the families to create a school that has multiple pathways to graduation. And so what, you know, what we wanted to do is kind of, you know, track that before they leave high school. Another output we talked a little bit about is, you know, you know, aligning, working with Division One expeditions, exhibitions, JLPs, senior, you know, senior projects, and making sure that kids go through a process that has some fidelity to it and that it's, you know, part of the portfolio, you know, and the experience. And these are more long-term type things, but some of these things are already in place. So we want to, you know, take those into consideration while we do that. And I know there could be some overlap, you know, between the, you know, how different classes and grade levels operate from ninth grade teams to 10th grade teams to seminars. But it would be us to make sure kids saw that path. And, and and so what you want to do is kids just to be really aware of what they're doing, how they're using their time. They're very independent, as you can see, we had an example of that of Elizabeth, you know, who talked this evening. And, and so they're aware of what they're doing, and they want to maximize their time, and they want to personalize their, you know, pathway to graduation. I think this is one way of doing that. And then you can partner with people outside the walls of, of South Heagan, whether it's in the community, at the post-secondary, partner them up with another school. There's a lot of things you can do to get there. And so this is a little more, you know, forecasting out what we would do. But it fits into the spirit, the mission, you know, the beliefs and the values of South Heagan. So that's kind of what founded there. Someone asked about what ESSA was, and, and this is just another metric that I think you can use as a school to kind of sell, you know, and document the growth of your students and what you're doing. You know, you don't have to, but it tracks New Hampshire. You know, the kids that, you know, what they're doing and what they're using their time on. And really, one of the most important things about ESSA for me is you want to create an educational experience that all different types of learners with different types of motivation levels, with different types of supports in and out of school, can feel like school is for them. And sometimes schools can't, you know, don't do that overly well. But for me, you know, having a kid understand like, hey, I can get a CT completer. I can be, you know, take a running star course. I can get a CERT. I could take the ACT. And you get two out of these nine, you're considered college career ready. And for a lot of kids, if they feel like someone is validating them, like, you know, whether it's the federal government or the state government or the school, you know, it's a, it's a pretty, it's a pretty good thing to do. And so it's just another metric that I would use to make kids feel good about coming to school and make, make them feel like they have a purpose and reason for being there. And you can track that, and it's not hard to track that. And so some examples like you need to, if it can be considered college and career ready, and, and you just basically, this would be an example how you could track made up numbers. You know, but you, you know, put in the graduating class and you can track it down to like sophomores, we have this many at this level, juniors, we have this many at this level. And so you're aware of what you're doing and the path that your kids are on. And then you can kind of, kind of evaluate what you're doing. And, and for me, it gives you a whole school look at what your, where your kids, what their interest levels are, what their pathways are. And then you can modify that based on the values of the community, the values of the students, and as it, you know, connects to the school. So that was that piece of it. And then some other stuff that, you know, that's already existing that was taken right out of, you know, the strategic plan is this is what they do. And we would, this would be another data point that we would, you know, grab, make sure, you know, we're using it to, you know, to get, to help our kids kind of grow, particularly in reading and math. And so you can see kind of what the goals, the norms are and what the goals are for South Heagan. And that's just taken directly from Central. This is with, sorry, the six-year degree completion. This is a little, this is more long-term. And, and, you know, Adam's on here and he can speak to this, you know, a little bit more. And some of you might have more experience with this. And, and so, you know, pulling some data after conversing with Galen since our last meeting, you know, next year will be the class of 2015 that we track, and they track 2013 to 14 because that's six years out. And that's what we have. And 64% of the graduating class, you know, has some sort of college degree, you know, and 74% afterwards. Another cool tool with the clearinghouse, the clearinghouse has lots of interesting data points in that we don't have to do it. Another cool tool with the clearinghouse, the clearinghouse has lots of interesting data points in that we don't have to do it. Is it, each class, it tells you like the top 25%, you know, the top 25 colleges and universities that they attend. So you can start to really track like where kids are going and, and what universities are, are most attended, even after they go and they leave and maybe they transfer after a semester or two years and, and, and you can see where kids are moving from. So that's a cool data point. And, and then this is just the graduation rate. And so those are the metrics that we could use. And so when I kind of put those in place, that was the mindset and the thought to make it something that we can monitor on a yearly basis, a monitor we can, you know, with the classes, you know, matriculating, matriculating through and then monitor kind of long-term. And at the end of the day, you want to have different points at different spots of their high school career. So you make sure that they are, you know, getting what they need from the school. And then the key is you can have all the data in the world, but you've got to be able to put it in hands of your educator. So they then can adapt to it, you know, and pivot pretty quick during the year and during a kid's high school career. So that's kind of trying to keep it pretty simple, pretty manageable. But those are the, what I was thinking. And, you know, I'll take any feedback that you guys have and, and, and the ways you want to see this kind of work out. But that's where I was coming from.
Hey, thanks, Mike. I appreciate the additional context. I hope that helped clear up some of these points for our board members. I will open the floor to questions or comments on it. I would like, after Adam says something, but I would like to add and make sure everybody does use the Zoom or raise your hand feature. So that way I don't lose track of anybody who wants to ask a question. So yes, Adam.
Thank you. Two things that deserve mention. The first is that we, we need to remember the context that I laid out a strategic vision for us a while back, and we've done very little with it since then. And that just needs to be acknowledged that there was real momentum at one point in time. I'm going to call it pre-COVID. And it's all been shelved for, for basically a year now. And that puts some of this in, in a missing context sort of situation where some of our, our, our more adept board members have noticed, wait a minute, we have a vision, but now we've got things that, do they align? Do they not? What's that implementation plan look like? So I want to say to all of you as board members that, that, that you're right on for asking that question. And that everything that we're doing is in, even though it's, it's not a cohesive strategic plan tied back to our vision, we're still making decisions based on what that vision is, meaning we're doing nothing that's going to then be something we have to undo because of what we think we're going and where we're going. We just haven't had the ability to, to flesh it out as much as we'd like to because we've, we've been dealing with this crisis. And I, I don't like saying that because I'm not trying to make an excuse here, but the reality is our, our time and attention has been somewhere else this past year. It just has been. So I, I want that first piece of context to be there because it deserves acknowledgement. The second is that Mike Berry's been here about 10 minutes. And the fact that he's been able to hit the ground running so quickly and be here on literally six months after his hire and deliver such an in-depth and on-point presentation about where we're going and how we plan to get there. He deserves a lot of credit for that. And to the South Heagan community and others and to the board, I want you to know that I believe Mike is, is proven himself thus far to be exactly the leader we need for the school at this time. A lot of work to do and, and we've done a lot of talking about what we need to do. But Mike is starting to show that he's the right, the right person to push us forward. I just wanted to, to make both of those points before we get going any further. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, thanks, Adam, for that additional context as well. And as I'm preparing the deliberative slides, I've recognized the tie-ins between previous visions and goals and to what Mike is trying to do. So they're definitely are there. That's just, now, now how do we link them? So everybody understands them. So I will see a question from John and then Stephanie. So go ahead, John.
Yeah, thanks. Yeah, this is a really great start. I, I view it as a start. I guess my question is, what, where does, in your mind, does this go from here? Refined with board comments for a period? Further developed internally? I mean, I have some specific observations about what you presented. I'm not sure if this is the forum to, to go into that level of detail. For example, you're, you're calling for an exit survey. I think the concept of an exit survey is way past overdue. It's, I'm so happy to see that for four years, but you're also calling for a six-year graduation rate as an outcome. Well, the survey should be probably six years worth of survey to see if you're meeting your six-year graduation goal, for example. So that's, that's just one observation. I like the ESA metrics. I don't quite understand what all the terms mean, so I've got some homework to do there. But I would really like to add, maybe add some metrics to that or combine some things that are in alignment specifically with our strategic vision. And it would be helpful, maybe Adam or whoever's that controls that document, I think it was, it was a presentation you gave to us in June of 2019 as the SAU 39 board that was, a motion was made and that, that was approved. Maybe that presentation you could deliver to us and we could start sifting through it and pulling out the things that are, that are easily applicable that metrics can apply to, because there was a bunch in there. And we, if we don't have that data, that we can start gathering it or Mike can start figuring it out like, okay, you know, what questions to ask or, or what data do we not have that we'd like to have to, to, to meet what he's presented here and also what we, what we adopted before. So that would be really helpful if you could, if you could either point us to where that is stored or just email it to us all. I'd really appreciate that. Thanks. Oh, and by the way, before I stop, Nia in the ninth grade to, to measure what happened in eighth grade, sounds like an excellent, excellent idea to me.
Thanks, John. Stephanie was next and then.
So Mike, thank you so very much for putting all this in context because it definitely makes it more clear and understandable of where it's going and what you're planning on doing. So I really, really appreciate you doing this tonight. One of the questions I have is when you talk about in, in your principal's report, you called it thematic units. And I think here you called it dynamic units. I don't know if you're using that interchangeably or not. But is this going to cause curriculum changes throughout, you know, all the different classes? If so, you know, knowing that we're short dean of faculty and yeah, are you, do you think you have the support to be able to get this done? Or what's your timeframe?
So for me,
What do you need?
Yeah. So when I say dynamic and, you know, thematic means something different. Thematic to me means, you know, another word I would use is dynamic. Like I want as a instructional leader, as the principal of the high school, I want our teachers really focused on, you know, how can I make my units and my daily lessons engaging and meaningful and relevant? So the kids want to learn the content, they want to learn the curriculum. They want to acquire skills. Like that's really what the job of the, the teacher is. They're the facilitator of learning. It's important for them to, you know, create the educational environment using their curriculum and instructional practices and assessment practice. So kids want to learn. And so for, for me, what teachers want to work on units and lesson plans and interactions with, you know, the, the kids with each other and the instructor. And so I think that is something that nothing really has to change, except the internal PD that you use for your communities of practice and your faculty meetings and your professional development days. There, there's nothing that really needs to be. That's kind of a DIY. And you consult with, you know, Christine Landworld and the new assistant superintendent. And when we do get a dean of faculty, you know, the, that, the, us partnering with them to make sure that our teachers are getting what they need to do, you know, and that's, you know, this is beyond kind of some of the assessment stuff that we'll be working on as well as, as a K-12, you know, school district. So right now, like it, it's more about putting things out there. Like I want to kind of narrow the energies of the faculty. And that's a bigger conversation. Narrow the energies of the faculty and, and staff so they can focus on this stuff and that's doing the work with the kids. And that's, that's the crux of teaching and learning. And right now you'll hear me like talk about, and Delaney probably has heard me say this, like, there's a lot of distractions floating around South Heagan with students and, and staff. And let's kind of get down to, you know, the purpose of school, finding the why of school. And, and that takes a lot of effort when you have a variety of levels of learners and kid in motivation levels. So, but yeah, that's the answer right now. It's, it's more something that we can work on internally.
Okay, thank you.
And, and my opinion, frankly, this is like the perfect time to bring in somebody like Steve Chamberlain, right? And he's going to really
Right.
So that's a perfect timing on that. All right, Laura is next.
Can you hear me? Okay. The original strategic vision wanted to connect to a higher ed partner. Where is that in the process?
Yeah. So that's there, you know, that, that was one of the reasons why, you know, with South Heagan and 39 was appealing. You know, where it was, you know, the anchoring adult, the mastery of learning, the, you know, moving to partnership with SNU, you know, or whatever post-secondary university so our kids could graduate. I think that fits in, you know, pretty easily to like if those output, you know, you know, outputs that can be added in, in, and woven to, to as we kind of add things. I think the schedule that we kind of put forth today has that in the back of our mind. I know Delaney and Amy were there at the presentation. It does create more flexibility and it gives us some, some, some opportunities to do some of that a little more easy rather than, than having not as much time. So I'm not worried about adding that to it. These are, these are pretty flexible, you know, and they can be evolved. You know, if I have to look, it could fit into that second or third output, Laura, pretty easily.
Um, that leads into another question I have, and that is SNU has a program where you do competencies and they've had it out for about five years where it's all competencies. And you end up with a high school diploma and an associate's degree at the same time. They had it on BLAX, which they no longer have anymore, but they still have all the curriculum. Is that what you're going to? Or will it be dual enrollment where each particular class is individually recognized as a college course?
That's, that's not as easily answered. You know, I think we have to figure, figure out what, you know, university or universities that you want to articulate with to potentially have a student walking across the stage, right? And they get, you hand them their diploma and then they also have, you know, getting associate's degree and, and that can be done, but it depends on, you know, who's more flexible and willing to work, you know? It's my understanding and your, and experience, SNU is very, you know, easy, easily to articulate with and you can work with. The second piece about the dual enrollment, that's pretty, that's not as broad of a term. And, and I think what people are finding is their children get older and students are finding, you can be dual enrolled in, in, in like one class can align and articulate with one school, but it might not articulate with the, another school. And so that, that has to be something that is really sorted through that, hey, when we're saying this is a dual enrollment course, this is what university is awarding you credit or, or allowing you to, to count this course as both the high school course and a college course. And because not all courses are going to be accepted by all universities. And that is a, a piece that needs to get sorted out. And, and that's the, you know, the nature of public education right now at the secondary level. When you are working in, in developing a school and developing that educational experience, the issue is it's kind of, you're kind of under attack and in a bit of a competition. You know, because there's lots of different ways a kid can earn and a family can go about navigating the high school experience. And so what we want to do is be able to, you know, make sure that we're as, as flexible as we can be, but also like there's some integrity, you know, and value to the, to the experience too. And so that piece is, that's going to take a little time to sort through and I've had numerous conversations with the, the counseling department and Natalie before she departed about what that could look like. And but yeah, it definitely goes back to that kind of like working towards that associate's degree and dual enrolled and so.
Pam, do you mind if I ask a follow-up?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. Um, well, the dual enrollment you have now, for example, AP chemistry dual enrollment is with Nashua Community College. I can go online before my student ever registers and I can look online and I can see Nashville Community College, chemistry, whatever. And I can see every college I'm looking at, how much credit I'll get from this class. It's all online before I ever sign up for it. What I'm particularly questioning is SNU as a program that's competency-based. And it's this associate's degree or nothing. You don't get credit if you're halfway through and you don't finish it. I, that's what I was concerned about. I'd like to see dual enrollment that's per class. So my child or students can pick. I want to do chemistry. I want to do statistics and, or English Lit.
No, I hear you. And like I said, it's not as easily answered, you know, and, and that's going to be, you know, some, some collaboration between myself, you know, other institutes. And then, you know, obviously working with Steve and, and Adam and Christine on what we want that to look like here for us.
No, thank you so much.
Yeah, no problem.
Yeah, thanks, Laura. That brought up a, a good point because I was always under the impression that it was more of a, you know, a one class at a time thing. I'd never and I hadn't thought about the associate's program that's all or nothing scenario. And yeah, that wouldn't be fun to put in a lot of time and effort and then sort of come out with nothing. So. All right, Amy. And then I see Stephanie has her hand raised again, but I will ask others who haven't asked a question before. Stephanie comes back. So if you don't mind, Amy, go ahead.
Yeah. So thank you, Mike. I, I think I'm going to go back to what John was saying and, and Adam, and I'm sorry, my dog's whining in the background. But so, you know, we started this journey towards adopting a strategic vision a while ago, and we are still on that journey. And I think what, you know, you've done admirably is to jump into that and to pull out some really important pieces of that and align those with things that are existing, but also add, add things that you would like to, to augment, to add value. So, you know, for example, I really appreciate the, the ESSA criteria that you added. I think that's really helpful. I think we've all been sort of looking at, gee, how can we evaluate South Heagan in ways other than SAT and ACT scores? You know, we certainly want those, but we also have been looking for other ways. So I really appreciate that work. I think this is certainly a work in progress. I think there's a lot to sort through. I think some of what folks are bringing up and may have concerns about is when we're looking at potentially offering a, a two-year degree, which I think would be great for a population of students. We also want to balance that with those students who are on the track to maximize the number of AP courses and, and dual enrollment courses. So we want to make sure that we're not stuck having to choose and pit one segment of the student population against another. And, and are there limitations based on finances and funding? So those are really big questions that we all have to wrestle with. And I'm not saying, I'm not looking for the answer certainly because none of us have the answer. But those are the, the types of conversations that, that we need to engage in. So I'll leave it at that for now.
No, and I appreciate you saying that, you know, the first thing I was trying to actionize a little bit, short-term of the, the overall plan that's been outlined that, you know, was, you know, presented to me. And one of the reasons, you know, I thought South Heagan was, you know, appealing. The, the other piece is, you know, you want to provide, you know, pathways and options. And, and there's a lot of, a number of communication that has to happen to people to really understand. And, and there's a lot of, a number of communication that has to happen to people to really understand, you know, what options and pathways they have. And that starts before you get to, to high school. And, and then when you get to grade nine, understanding, you know, what's in front of you and how you can use the school to become the version of yourself that you and your family kind of want. And it, the more things you can kind of clear off, like the small things that, you know, kind of get in the way that tie up the scheduling process, that tie up what sophomore year or junior year could look like. And, and, and then at the same time, you know, allow kids to have some choice in that. That's really what you want to do. So, you know, you guys have this strategic vision that's outlined, but it has to be implemented. You know, and it has to be actionized. And I think the steps through the decisions that we're going to try to make this year with a couple of things that are coming, you know, coming up right now. Plus with this work, you know, I hope it kind of gets there. And I think it can get there a little quicker than people think. And I think it can get there in a little more fiscally responsible than people are anticipating. Because people say, hey, when you want to do all these things, oh, it's going to cost more. You're going to need more. And I, I don't necessarily think it is. I think you just got to reallocate your resources and your time and your energy. And, uh, so I get to work with the, the staff and the students first initially to kind of come up with what that can look like. And, uh, and so that's what we're doing. And then you obviously the school board and the superintendent central office are partners in that and can, you know, dictate how that goes.
I, I really appreciate that, Mike. And, um, and I, I, I do appreciate you having the ability to think outside the box and to come up with ways to, you know, maximize our funds. Because it, it sounds like that's what you're, um, you know, you want to provide the best for our students, but you're also um, understanding that we have to balance that with, with, you know, we are a public school and, um, and have to use our, our finances and get the most bang for the buck. So I, I, I do appreciate all the work you're putting into it and look forward to, to this journey continuing.
Thanks for that, Amy, and, and Mike for your answers. Uh, before I go back to Stephanie, Steve and George gave you the opportunity to raise your hand if you like. If no, okay.
I'm also.
All right, no problem. One, one comment I did want to make as I was just going through Mike's, uh, goals, the outputs and outcomes. And, and maybe this kind of goes to John's earlier comments, um, about the, the way they are structured. And maybe we don't have to solve it right now, but to make them more like smart goals, all right? Make sure they, they have time, they're time bound, which is great. That's always a, a hard one for people to really, to do, but to make sure that they're, they're truly measurable. So again, nothing to solve right now, but it's something that we need to look into, you know, how do we make these measurable? So we know for sure that we're hitting, uh, what we want to hit. All right, Stephanie, and then I'll, then more after.
Okay. So one of the things I, I was sitting here thinking, um, is this idea, not this particular presentation, but the idea of exactly what Tim, you were just mentioning about those smart goals and having like a little out, out, you know, I don't know, presentation of some sort, but that would be great for like the eighth grade parents to see what's coming down and kind of get them excited. And the kids excited about so he can high school and what they have to look forward to, understanding what those are. I don't know, just something I was thinking about. Also, um, this would be a great thing to update every year when we first start talking about budget in the fall. Or even maybe in, in, in August, right before school starts. So we know where, what's driving you this year? And what you've been working on, which where you're going in the next few years. I think it would help all of us with that, uh, going forward piece, which would be great. I don't know if that's asking too much, but it's just a thought. One of the, the question I have is because of, I'm just thinking about the things that are so he can division one winter session, JLP senior project. When looking at some of these, these shifts, and I, I think I can envision maybe some of the things you're doing. Are, are these, I don't want to say going away. Are you changing them like this electronic portfolio requirement? Is that something like division one is going to expand and incorporate this is that what? What about those things that people think of as so he canish?
Yeah, no, obviously I think that's more of a conversation as, as the principal, you, you kind of put it out there where how to, how to connect, you know, you got it. For me, you know, my, you know, the way I look at it is I mentioned earlier, you got students perspective, teach perspective, family perspective. I get your perspective, central office. And I kind of can see where everything kind of lands and, and how we get there, you know, that's a very much a, a collaborative effort. That's very much the leadership behind that is very much distributed because that is, you know, first and foremost, South Eagan. And there's some really good, you know, things that South Eagan has done and is known for. And, and in conversation I had recently, someone said, hey, when we do it well, the best thing that happens is division one. And then two weeks later, you can talk about, hey, the best thing that happens at South Eagan is winter section. And then you can get a conversation with someone else and they have another component of what's the best thing at South Eagan. And they have all these little things happening. And one of the most strange things is you have all these things that are required for graduation, which is a very coalition thing for school, but it's not attached to a class. So then how do you, you know, make sure that it is done with some fidelity and of high quality? And I think when you add something in like the portfolio or transitioning to electronic portfolio, which is connected to Naviance and their counselors and advisory, I think it just adds a bit more structure and it gives a little more purpose. And, and how you incorporate all that, that's, that's through conversation and, and work and, and, and that's what we have to do. And, and I can't say, hey, this is how we're going to do it because people won't do it, right? You gotta say, hey, this is where I think we want to go and, and, and it, and it can make life easier for people. And, and then maybe along there, you don't need something. Maybe they say, hey, we can combine a couple of these things or we can put more emphasis on this. Or we can create something new. And, and I know South Eagan has, you know, prides themselves on being innovative and forward-thinking and having great partnerships. But sometimes it comes, I think it's time, you know, this year is for me, I think, caused me to really look at it just as an educator, but particularly a new person at South Eagan to pause and reflect to think about like everything that we're doing and, and try to make it easier for people to navigate it. So we can do those things well and do them well for more kids and, and families. And I think that's, that whole portfolio piece kind of comes into that. And, and, you know, you say that to teachers and kids, they think it's going to be more work. But then what has to go in order to pull that off? What do you take away to make sure that's valued, you know? And, and so that's the conversation that needs to be had.
Yeah, yeah. I, I love the idea of making each of these things have a purpose because, you know, winter session is fun for everybody. But again, what is the purpose and tying it back to something that's meaningful? Uh, you know, same with senior project. I mean, I've, I have to say that you, you watch kids grow so much from when they start as freshmen, when they first start. Oh, if even back in the middle school, they start doing presentations and they start writing and they start speaking. So he can prepares a more and they get into the JLP and you have this, you know, with the big research paper. And then you get to your senior project and you start seeing that the research work comes together along with the presentation skills, along with everything, but making it purposeful. Like, why did you choose what you did? You know? It, I love the idea of making each of these things kind of tie back. Great idea.
Well, the other piece about this is you're going to have to rebrand the experience coming out of COVID. You know, you, you just, you have to, you have to think about how you're remarketing that because things have changed in the eyes of students. Things have changed in the eyes of, of families. And you got to create, try to create an environment that they're coming back to. That's, that's exciting. And, and that's something that we've been talking about, uh, that, hey, when we come back into August and, 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 you know, whenever we do come back, you know, they're looking forward to it. And getting them through February and March, you know, January, February, March is, is, is trying to set the table on what it could look like. And talking about these outputs and outcomes and, and some of the experiences that we're going to give to the kids through the schedule and, and the staff, you know, through how we're going to use time. I think that's there to kind of excite them. And, and that's why I'm doing what we're doing.
Yep. Hey, Tim, I have one last question. It should be quick.
Go ahead, Stephanie.
All right. Um, in your one slide, you talk about, I, number of students that complete the graduation requirements. It says in a five-year period. Can you explain the five-year period versus high schools typically four years?
Yeah, I'm going to, might have to default to Adam on this a little bit for clarification, but, um, you, you have fought, you know, there's a, there's a, a way to document the graduation window of five years for certain components of students.
That the eighth grade math sort of?
No, not necessarily. Adam, you want to just make it succinct? I could wander around and get to it eventually.
Yeah, we, we have a, a very few number of students that stick around for a fifth year, usually are on special education, but not, not always. And, um, although this is not your specific question, um, I, COVID has brought to the surface this concept for me in a different way. I think we might need to be open to some students sticking around for a fifth year to finish up high school and, and be ready to go off to college. I think either socially, emotionally, physically, or academically, some kids may not quite be ready by the end of the typical high school year. And, um, I think there's, I think a conversation could be warranted about what that could look like about having that, that opportunity expanded for folks. I don't want to add more teachers as resolved and more, you know, there's all, there's a whole host of things that go along with that. We're not going to play a fifth year of football and, and have a bunch of nineteen-year-olds running around. I, I'm not saying that. But I do think there is a group of students, and in fact, uh, I, I was, had a conversation this fall with a couple of our best and brightest, uh, walking around the track. And one of them said to me, Adam, with, with what's happened with COVID, I'm just not sure I'm ready after this year um, to go off and go to the next step. And it really struck me. That was a really powerful comment that that student made to me and I've, it's, it stayed with me. So, um, I've, uh, Hopkinton does something similar for what it's worth. Uh, but someone I know from Hopkinton is coming to work here. But, uh, I, I think that there's something to that. But to answer the specific question I was asked, we just have a very few kids that are usually special ed related that stick around for a fifth year.
Okay, I get the concept. Thank you.
That wasn't the succinct that Mike asked me for, cue me up for, sorry, Mike.
No, I'd rather have not succinct, but have full info.
I think that also plays right into the whole individualized learning plans that we're, you know, trying to incorporate, right? So you don't speed people through and, and, you know, let them, let them learn at their pace and that's what gets them there. So. All right, um, Laura did have a question, but her hand is no longer up. So I will go over to John. Go ahead, John.
Thanks. Maybe just to kind of rephrase or kind of come back to where I started to talk. And maybe this is a good way to sum up this discussion at this point. If we go any further, I fear we'll just get into deep into the weeds, which seems to be where this, where this next conversation is going to be. So the question is, I guess it's, it's really a time timeline question. Like what, what are your next steps? What are you looking as contributions from us? And when, um, maybe, and what's the first goal? Is it, it seems to me that the, the great first goal would be to establish a baseline metrics, whatever those are, you know, if it's the S, ESSA or, or some hybrid with our strategic vision and some other things rolled in. And then get actual numbers, not made up numbers. And, and then to be able to say, oh, we're actually meeting a lot of these goals or oh, here's a big hole. I mean, that's, I think, a part that we don't really have a good handle on is where, what our baseline metrics are. So it seemed to me that working now, between now and some time to understand what our metrics load is going to look like. And then have a period of time to actually gather the numbers and, and then evaluate would seem to be in order. And I'm, that's just my thinking on the subject. So my question to you is what, what did you want from us? Or what do you need from us and when? And what are your plans moving forward?
Yeah. So, I, first I'll be honest, I'm pumping out a lot of work at a really fast pace. And so one of the things that I've talked to Adam with is I gotta make sure I'm doing it in a kind of a authentic manner that makes sure that I'm not misstepping. And people around me hear me say that, you know, I just don't want to work for the sake of working. And I just want, want to push out, you know, information and, and push out goals and directions without, you know, making sure we're doing it in a, you know, just a genuine manner. And that it's what people want. And that takes time to make sure that you know what, where kids are at, parents are at. You know, uh, teachers are at. And so my next steps to kind of get to it is, is kind of look at where we're at. You know, there's a lot of moving parts in it with this stuff. I want to make sure we're aligned with the district first and foremost. Got to be aligned there. Got to make sure that it makes sense and that we have like the, the marching orders in place. Like, all right, move forward on this and then determine at the building level, how do we want to move forward on, on this? I do tend to agree with you, John, like you got to have a base and I got to figure out what data and evidence we're going to use as the base of these. And I think we have a pretty good idea, but establishing that. Uh, and then the other piece of this is I have no problem communicating this out to the student body. They, they're old enough to have conversations like this of like, hey, while you're here, here's what we're doing. And, and, and that's okay. You don't have to do it in their face on a, on a, on a regular basis, but them understanding, you know, that they're part of something bigger than themselves. And when South Eagan looks good, like, and, and South Eagan, you know, has a good reputation in, in the community and at the post-secondary level, that's better for everybody. And so I think, you know, kind of pausing, making sure we're good there and getting things aligned within our own building and at the central office level. And then I think, you know, coming back with some other, hey, update on where we're at with this. I think is probably the next step for me. And I could weigh in on Adam to see how it fits into like with Mount Vernon and AMS and Clark Wilkins with their work. I don't have that lens, John.
Right.
Yeah, thanks. Those are good questions, John. Um, and thanks, Mike, for, for those answers. You know, as I'm from my, again, my own perspective, as I'm looking at these and as some board members, uh, so actually probably all of you guys saw, at, at one point when we were first putting our public hearing slides together, I had a bunch of these. You know, and a few were like three or four words or so, um, bulletized. But I do want to incorporate these into the deliberative, um, slides to show how they dovetail into our strategic goals. So the, the sooner we have an opportunity to really get into this and to understand exactly, uh, obviously, uh, the better. You know, I don't want to put something out there that it's not going to make sense to anybody. They're not going to understand where we're coming from, et cetera. So, um, luckily, as we're going to discuss shortly, I think, you know, we have a windfall and having some extra time to get through this and to really hone a lot of these to the point where they make sense for everybody. So, uh, that'd be a good thing. Laura, go ahead with your question.
I wanted to suggest a public comment period, and I have some other questions, but other people might ask them. So I might wait.
Uh, so we do have a public comment at the end of the, um, agenda and totally completely will adhere to that. But I wanted to just finish up all our board discussions first.
Okay, um, the computer requirement, I guess I, I don't quite understand your electric or electronic, um, portfolio. How does that differ from the current graduation requirement that's fulfilled with division one?
Yeah, I think it would be an evolution of that.
Okay. And students already kind of have an electronic portfolio as they go through with their accounts. But so he can, how would that differ from what they already have? And who would have access to this? And are you sharing it with other people? Are you archiving it? And I have a couple of follow-ups, but I'll let you.
Uh, I think those are conversations that have yet to be determined on exactly how we get there and what platforms we use to do that.
Okay. I, I know specifically that so he can has various assignments where the teachers are trying to teach them how to, um, defend an argument, even if they disagree with it. And sometimes they have even assignments they don't, they don't even align with. But they're persuasive pieces that are intended to stretch their ability. And I'm concerned about what about when students do this and they don't align with it. And then everything, we have this electronic footprint that always follows us now.
Yeah, I think, you know, I almost sort of, you know, just because it is electronic. Yeah, I think, you know, I I'm not sure if, you know, just because it's electronic, it doesn't have to be available to. To everybody and it it's just more of a. Twenty twenty-five way of, you know. Archiving. You know, creating just like your portfolio, except it's online, right? And it's, and and you can have the ability to to keep it. As opposed to binders and papers and, you know, clear. Know whatever we used to put our papers in and the binders with the clear folders in it, you know, like we don't use that, right, as our portfolio, we. We organize it in a, in a manner that we just, you know, stays with us. As a person, as a student, and you would have access to whoever we did, they're determined need to have access to it. And as you travel through high school. So, um, that was the the thought process behind it.
Is it deleted when they graduate or?
I think it would be their material, the students' material typically. It's not for us, right? It's them.
I mean, you know, maybe Delaney can expand on this thought, but I know. There are lots of assignments that really are there to stretch student thought, which is all a. Useful exercise.
Okay, um, thanks for that, Laura. Um, Steve, you're, you end up.
Yes, and Mike down. Um, I just to expand on the electronic portfolio thing for about fifteen years or more, I've been aware of. Software packages for to provide electronic portfolios for students. The idea is to collect electronically. Evidence tied to specific mastery goals. So essentially, your portfolio, at the end of your four years or five years or. Two years, if you're really quick, um, for every single, uh. Academic and and works, so you have a goal you have. You will accumulate in your portfolio evidence that you have mastered that goal. Um, so it's, um. And then when you're done, you're done, you know, we'll hit your thumb drive and and off you go. It's not, it's not part of your permanent record. And we all know, by the way, your high school permanent record isn't permanent. Five years after you graduate, we give you a chance to pick it up or we burn it. Um, there is no permanence beyond, um. A record of your, uh, the courses you took or the grades you received.
Thanks, Steve. Okay, Laura, did you have another question or did you stop? Take your hand down.
I could ask questions all day, but I'll just wait.
Alright, thanks. Uh, does anybody else have any other questions on this? First of all, I do again, wanna reiterate and commend. Mike for, uh, all this work. I really appreciate it. I think that's, it's gonna help push us, um, in the right direction. Uh, still some honing needs to happen. I think we all recognize that, uh, but, you know, they're very workable. Items that we can ensure, or I shouldn't say ensure. Not really our job, but it's our job to help, uh, get you and the school to where these are implemented. So. Thank you for that. So seeing no other questions on this topic, I'll close this portion of the discussion. Um, and we'll go on to the next topic. And even though it's on our agenda for an hour and five minutes, I don't think it's gonna take us that long, hopefully. And that is to talk about the annual meeting postponement. Um, so as we talked briefly about at the SOU meeting. There is, there was discussion, this, I guess it was morning. Um, between, uh, school board chairs, town moderators, school district moderators, selectmen. Uh, about pushing out the, um, both the ballot voting as well as the deliberative sessions. Associated with, um, those things. And, um, as Adam mentioned. Everybody, uh, at that meeting, um, had a consensus of moving things out to, uh, the ballot voting for Juneteenth. So it has to, they gave this, um, state, the executive, uh. Not an order, but, uh, emergency order allowed us, um, to go. To change it to April, May, June, or July. And it has to be the second Tuesday of the month of any of those months. Uh, we kind of settled in on on June. Uh, that was definitely my first choice. Um, you know, there's lots of folks that wanted to make sure it was as as late as possible. Um, the, the latest it could be would be July, but I, the, the issue there is. At that point, we've rolled into the the following fiscal year, um, and it becomes more difficult to. Make sure that everything's in place that you want. So obviously, when we're voting, um, when people are voting for our budget, our budget affects. The next fiscal year, we want to have that in place. Typically, before the fiscal year starts. Uh, and so that means that, um, you back up the deliberative. Um, sessions prior to that, and that would make it the week of May first, uh, May first being a Saturday. Um, but then, as Adam mentioned, typically, we do Monday, Saudi again, Tuesday, Amherst, Wednesday, Mount Vernon. So, and it is up to us decide, to decide how we want the Saudi corporate school board. Um, voting, not the board voting, but the Sohigan. Uh, corporal school district voting to happen and when we want that deliberative to be. So I will open the floor for a minute for, or not a minute, for as long as it takes. Uh, to have discussion on this. If there is, anybody has a, an issue with those dates, uh, let's discuss it. If you don't have an issue. Um, and you're okay with it. You can say that. You don't have to say anything if you don't want to. I will take it automatically as you agree. Uh, but Stephanie has her hand raised first, so I will go to Stephanie. Go ahead.
So I, I was just wondering if we could just have a brief summary of the discussions of why the move. I'm going to assume it has to do with deliberative and being in person for that, but I have no idea. So just. Curious, I'm not necessarily opposed because. I'm, people being in person, because it can't be just the voting date, right? Because we voted for president, it's gotta be that in person.
Absolutely correct. Um, so two reasons, and I'm gonna open it over to, or hand it over to Steve and Adam. Um, because they're much more, um, versed in this than I am. Um, but is because of obviously health concerns, uh, for a deliberate. Because the right to have it at this time of year, you gotta put people in the same vicinity of each other. Um, and also in Mount Vernon, um, we have a town meeting, which follows is the day after ballot voting. And, you know, they're cramming a bunch of people into a, a meeting room or. In our case, the, uh, multi-purpose room at the school. So, um, there's obviously health concerns related to that, but, uh, go ahead, Steve. Won't you, um, since you're the town moderator, I'm sure you have a, a good feel of of the. Reasons why. So please feel free to expand.
Yeah, so, uh, the short answer is Stephanie's right, because it's deliberative. Uh, we started thinking about this, moderators started thinking about this, uh, back in December. Um, in general, moderators felt, especially town moderators who have to run the elections. Uh, that we know how to run a safe election in March, uh, under COVID. We've done it four hundred times already. Because of the damn presidential year. Um, although, uh, we, when we started talking about this in December, we didn't anticipate that the, uh. The positivity rate would get as high as it has, but in general, we thought we could, we could pull off a March election safely. The issue was, uh, none of us have experience having a deliberative session. In February in an enclosed space. So, uh. That was worrying to us in general. But the law did not allow any good options. The legislature passed a terrible law last year. That gave us an option for deliberatives that was just horrible and no one want. No one thought that any board would want to do that alternative to deliberative. So, uh, we kind of rejected that in favor and most towns across the state and most school districts across the state rejected that alternative in favor of an in-person one. And of holding our noses and having to do it in the prescribed week, which is next week. Um, then, uh, Marabue Dick Two, the governor gave us an option with Executive Order eighty-three, Emergency Order eighty-three. Uh, on Friday night, uh, which lets us postpone the whole shebang out, as Kim said. Um, uh, to the second Tuesday of April, May, June, or July. So, uh, the moderators and the, uh, chairs of the, of the various boards. Uh, quickly cobbled together a meeting this morning to talk about how we all felt, because no. We all, each of us knew how we felt individually, but there was no opportunity to talk about it amongst ourselves, see if we reached agreement. And the overarching goal is the five. Call all my fingers up here, the five voting entities. Uh, Amherst, Sohigan, and Mount Vernon School Districts and Amherst and Mount Vernon Towns. Um, really should all vote on the same day, because if we don't, then whoever's odd man out. Their voters get to go, have to go twice. So we we really want to find it, a, a day we could all live with. And if we couldn't find that day, it would have been March. Eighth, or whatever day it was going to be in March. Um, but, uh, everybody came to the meeting in the morning and 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 showed their cards and and everyone was. Not happy with the idea of having deliberatives next week and everyone, or in case of Mount Vernon, uh, traditional meeting, town meeting. Um, and everybody wanted to push it out. So, um. The date we all felt comfortable, most comfortable with was in fact, uh, the, uh, the Juneteenth date. Um, and it 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 works for. Everybody, there, there are issues with it. There's issues with it, Mount Vernon Town. Um, Tom Grottheir at the SOU meeting talked about potential hiring issues. Um, but, uh, i- in general, it feels like the safest and best, and we think. Um, with the deliberatives, the first week in May, already the, the. Moderators are talking about maybe having those deliberatives outdoors. Uh, for additional safety, if if health conditions. Seem to warrant it. Um, but certainly, uh, to run the election in the gym and in in. In at high school for Amherst and in the multi-purpose room in in Mount Vernon. Uh, from Mount Vernon, um, see, we, we all think we can run that very safely in June, uh, indoors. So there's the, there's the, the long, short answer.
Thanks, Steve. I appreciate that. Uh, anybody else have any questions or concerns? Love this. Okay, um, and. As Adam just mildly suggested, uh, that we have a motion. And it's all sent to our chat inboxes. So if somebody wants to make that motion, I'd be happy to entertain it.
I'll make the motion.
Okay, do you wanna read it out loud for our studio audience?
Per Emergency Order Number eighty-three dated January twenty-two, twenty-twenty-one. To move the annual meeting process to a first session, AKA deliberative session, date. To Monday, May three, twenty-twenty-one, and a voting day to Tuesday, June eight, twenty-twenty-one. The time and specific location of the first session to be determined by the time it is posted at least fourteen days prior.
Great, thank you. Do I have a second? Second by Hemi, great. Any other discussion on it? Seeing none, let's take a roll call vote. Steve.
Yes.
Amy.
A C S.
John.
Glover, yes.
Stephanie.
Run, yes.
Laura.
Taylor, yes.
George.
Bruce, yes.
And Gronster, yes. So we pass that seven to zero. So, uh, hopefully, uh. This, although, I'm not sure when Amber Stasor meeting, I think they're having it right now. Um, hopefully, they're. Uh, going through the same motions and approving their change, uh, to the similar dates. Oh, they have? Okay, great. Um, and tomorrow, Mount Vernon is having their emergency meeting, uh, and they do it likewise. And all the towns are doing the same. So, um, pending those, I think, uh, we're good to go. We are good to go because we just voted that. So hopefully, everybody else falls in line. All right, so that did not take an hour and five minutes. Um. So at this point, we can go to public input number two of two. And again, as I mentioned before, if any member of the public would like to. Ask a question or make a comment, please state your name, address, town that you live in, uh, use the raise your hand feature. And, um, we'll go from there. I'll call on you and, and I see that. And this time I am looking at the attendee list. I know sometimes it's a little difficult to find the raise your hand feature, so I'll give you another minute or so. Okay, maybe not quite a minute. All right, well, seeing no other public comments. I will close that portion of the meeting. And we do have a quick non-public, uh, item to cover. So if I can have a motion to go into non-public.
I'm going to go into that on public.
Per, is it, uh, the one that's on here, Adam, ninety-one, A equals three, two. Section one. Hey, thank you. Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Steve. Okay, we'll do a roll call vote. Steve.
Yes.
Amy.
A C S.
John.
Glover, yes.
Stephanie.
Run, yes.
Laura. Yeah, I see you not.
Taylor, yes.
Okay, George. Or, yes. And Gronster, yes. Okay, and public meeting is.